Everdeen State Subdivision located on the east side of Salt Road. At Forest Creek Equity Corp. is requesting preliminary final subdivision, preliminary final subdivision and site plan approval. On section one of seventy-nine lots, single-family residential subdivision on sixty-nine point five acres. Located in a R-3 single-family residential district under the code of Webster.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board. We were here last time for concept. We are obviously back here for preliminary final approval. I know Walt Baker had incorporated a lot of the comments that were provided by the board and some of which were provided by the audience. Certainly I'll turn it over to Walt at this point to address any questions or concerns that members of the board may have. But I do believe that we have addressed everything sufficiently based upon the comments we received.
Good evening, I'm Walt Baker. Walt Baker with DSB Engineering. And as Jared had mentioned, we're here tonight for preliminary final, preliminary overall of seventy-nine lot subdivision on Salt Road. And final for the first section, which would be twenty-three lots. And as he stated, we were here back in June for concept approval, concept review. And we've received comments from the audience as well as the staff members. And then when we resubmitted the plans for this meeting, we also received comments from the staff again. I'm sure you've seen the comments from the PRC. A number of them are basically statements that the lots have been reconfigured to eliminate the second pond. We have that second pond at the northern part of the site, so we're down to just one stormwater pond. And so we addressed that. As far as the comment that was received from the staff, the access easement is also eliminated as requested. The main pond was enlarged to accommodate all the storm water, obviously we eliminated the second pond. We also enlarged the main pond along Salt Road. Berm on the south side has been added to the plan, which we actually had for the concept meeting as well. So that is on the plan. The road was moved to the north to offset from Morley per Monroe County DFT. And that was also on the previous set of plans, but now we've incorporated these other changes as well. Sidewalks, we eliminated sidewalks and streetlights. And drainage easement for the four lots. The comment that we received from the PRC was to reconfigure that so it wouldn't impact the backyards of the lots that are along the pond. We also added a berm along the full length of the pond, so that basically parallels Salt Road. We had the pond along Salt Road, so the highway department could access it. And then we have a berm, so it would help buffer the backyards from the existing adjacent property owners across the street on Salt Road. So we did that, but there was also, obviously we have drainage in that area for the backyard, so we have some storm inlets. And we showed up a storm easement, but the highway department prefers that we eliminate that easement and reconfigure that. And move the pond, move the berm back a little bit further, so the lots will end up being about two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep. So they'll have a substantial backyard to use. Move the piping, that's why I was just mentioning the piping along that berm, so we'll take care of that. And reconfigure that, and we'll follow up with the highway department to make sure he's agreeing with that. We brought the property line back to the side of the pond, so the pond area itself will just be out of separate needed parcel to the town for maintenance. So it won't actually be in something's backyard. And the sewer department had a couple of changes about the size of the manhole barrels, so we'll take care of that. And that's about it. We also met earlier today with the adjacent property owner to the north, Dean Bay, regarding a sewer connection he'd like to have to his property for future use on his parcel. Forest Creek Equity representative is here, so we can address that as far as...
Hi, Richard Batisey. Yeah, we're, we will put a stub of eight-inch main with a, I guess, a manhole at the property line. So just between our property and the property of the one, so that you can use it in the future. Would that, would that need, Dean's property, would that need a post-it or something?
Yes, basically, yeah, his property, we discussed it with him earlier, and I showed him a plan that I put together to show the topography of his property. And his property actually, as you go north, it starts to drop off considerably, more like an eight percent slope heading down. So we can put this eighty-sanitary sewer I calculated, so it'll come right to the property line. And that barrel will be about five feet in ground. And, but he's going to have to look at maybe a low-pressure forest main or something like that. We have a pump system to pump into that, grab the sewer. Berm's five feet. And we also showed trees, we have groupies of trees to lean every property line as you go across. We have a series of tree trees at every property, you can actually look at the berm as.
Now where, where would the easement be, right along, close to the berm? The easement going back there?
You mean the storm sewer easement?
Yeah, any easement at all for anything.
Well, we're gonna redesign that, so it goes, so the easement would only be for access for the town to get to or catch up to the field inlet. So you'd have a field inlet, so the drainage isn't blocked by the berm. Obviously, the topography slopes towards the berm, so you have the water coming their way from the house. And then, so you'd have to provide field inlet, and then the berm obviously goes up. Yeah, and then we have that discharge, twelve-inch discharge pipe, the storm discharge pipe that will go basically through the berm into the pond. We can...
So that gives everyone their clear backyard?
Gives everybody clear backyard? Right, and their, their lots will be about two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep?
Yeah.
And then the berm will be on their property. But then the usable part of their backyard, the house, if I can say, forty foot step to the house, it still have a hundred-and-twenty feet of backyard. That's basically no easements to impact any sheds or whatever.
Yeah, but I think that worked out good, there was a lot of discussion when we were seeing it in the last meetings here.
We hear that.
Okay, um, I got one letter here, let me take this up. They sent this one, let's see, Gail Binder. She sent this in, attention, this email came from her state research, let's see. The Webster Planning Board, please add this read into the record on August seventeenth regarding the Everdeen subdivision. I live at three fifty-seven Gulfview Heights, my name is Gail Binder. I've been a Webster homeowner for fifty years. Seventy-nine new homes in the Everdeen subdivision will result in approximately a hundred-and-sixty additional vehicles using Salt Road. And specifically the intersection of Salt and Woodard roads. This intersection is already dangerous. At Salt Road, there is a gully just south of this intersection. Vehicles entering Salt Road from Woodard cannot see approaching vehicles until these vehicles emerge from the gully. And northbound vehicles on Salt Road cannot see vehicles entering Salt from Woodard. I've lived in the Woodard Road area for thirty-five years, and although I drive a van with high seating according to actual visibility, I still force myself to sit and count slowly to five before entering Salt Road. A few summers ago, the town spent an entire summer at undoubtedly at huge expense lowering a slightly elevated elevation to a Woodard Road between Basket and Coming Line Roads. And this was the benefit of six homes and twelve circle. Yet hundreds of vehicles negotiate the Salt-Woodard Road intersection daily. And with three new housing developments on Salt Road, this number is increasingly dramatic. As the planning boards were considering approvals for the Everdeen West Gulf Course and Salt Road, Schlegel Road, housing developments have noted no discussion and consideration being made in regard to increasing the decreased traffic as Webster deteriorates from suburban, semi-rural to urban suburban. Gail Binder, Gulfview Heights. All right, anyways, just... Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here wishing to speak?
Yeah, so Park Department.
Yeah, I'm just going to give it to the mic.
Our Department of Sewer Department, Walt, you had mentioned that you're adding on to the sewer?
A sewer, a crazy sewer stuff.
Is that on the site plan that we review?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, so this then, I haven't had a chance to look at it, obviously, I don't think Mary has. There's some easements that need to be resolved.
Yeah, on the property line.
Okay, and you had mentioned some for the storm as well that need to be resolved?
We have it on the plan already.
Okay, so, just, I just want to let the board know that we have not seen this stuff, haven't seen, had a chance to review it, or how it may impact the future development for the board.
Okay, so, would your work ethic, if they put it in, if they add a preliminary, preliminary final, they put it in, but there's nothing until it is reviewed? No permits issued until reviewed?
You know, that's, it goes back to what I said, especially if they're getting preliminary or final.
Well, it's in for preliminary final, and the reason for that in this case is because they've been to both bars several times. And they fine-tuned it, and now they've addressed everything, and we talked at PRC and at the last planning board meeting and so on. So we felt comfortable with them.
We did, you had one.
Completely complete, except this point.
Except for this point?
Exactly.
Correct.
So I'd hate, I have to have him... I can just stick with it. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I understand your point, but I think we, you know, we need, as a town, we have a chance to review that.
Yeah, yeah, what we'll do is we can prove it, what we've got, and then make it subject to review by you prior to any future, before any permits are issued.
That, that sounds serious.
Okay, got it, okay. This is the last minute thing, just basically a favor, because they're enjoying the property.
It's a favor of what then may impact, what else?
Yeah, obviously. So that'll work all right?
I think that'll work.
That works all right for you guys?
That'll work.
All right. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak regarding this? Just give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Mark DePauls, two thirty-seven Salt Road, right across the street from us. Last time, last meeting, I spoke about the berm for all of us across the street from this parcel. Five-foot berm really doesn't keep us from seeing much of what goes on in all these people's backyards. I'd like to request that they consider a larger berm, much like what I said at the last meeting, if yours on Phillips Road at Metis. It's just a substantial berm that as you drive down the road, you see rooftops, you see the siding below the rooftop. You don't see the decks, the swing sets, the hot tubs, the pools, the panios. None of us here like what happened when it got resolved from large lot to R-two. But I think because the rest of us were all there ahead of time, at least we deserve the consideration of this being done in accordance so that we feel like we're not looking to these people's backyards. And I had a question, Walt, when you just spoke about this berm being in people's backyards, you were talking about the berm being their backyard, the pond, and then the berm before you get to the road.
Why don't you, let's do this one, address the board with your comment. He'll take a note of that, and then I'll have him address you, okay?
When he spoke about the berm being in people's backyard, I just assumed, I'd like to take a look at these plans, but I just assumed that the people's backyards that face the west side of the road, I just assumed that their backyards, at the end of their backyard would be the retention pond. And then beyond the pond would be the berm, and then beyond the berm would be Salt Road.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but no, actually the berm is on the east side of the pond in the backyards of the homes. This way here, I think it does two things, in my opinion, I goes, one, it makes it more accessible for the highway department for maintenance in that pond, because now they have access to the whole, it's a linear long pond, so they have access for maintenance on that pond. Then the berm is on the east side of the thing, now the yards go right to the backyard. In my opinion, looking at some of the other projects like this, when a berm is reasonably high, this is five-foot high, there's some landscaping on top of it, people will tend to maintain it. If you make a mountain out there, they go to hell.
I can appreciate that, but now that I understand that, and it may have a different, a different appearance if it's that far back behind the pond now from where I stand. But now, now, now that I have a better understanding where this pond is, it's not a big pond. So what are we gonna do for all of us across the street so this thing doesn't turn into a mosquito swamp? I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, basically, I'm looking across the street at the pond. I'm also looking across the street at whatever gap is in the pond that ends up in the road or in my yard.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
You understand what I'm saying?
I can't answer that, I mean, I don't know if they can either, because it depends on the water flow going through there. If there's a volume of water that's running, we regularly, any of those things.
If there is, that's fine, but I mean, I've, I've been, passed enough, enough places that ones that have nothing moving on, a good case in point would be anybody that might be familiar with the Oakmont apartment complex on Jackson Road. Around the perimeter, there's a number of ponds. Oh, they're stagnant all the time, stagnant all the time. Again, if you go down, some of them, I can't think of a naming one, but some that have ponds in them to keep water moving, then it's a different story. And again, you know, it could be a pain in the backside, but you know, I kind of feel like some of us got railroaded when that passed administration change, we could change. We can't do anything about that. All I can do now is speak my piece about making sure that all of us, if we were there first, you know, make sure that this comes out the way it should, so that we're not looking at a bunch, a bunch of backyards and a mosquito swamp.
I, I don't know what, can you address, give them a chance to answer?
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Well, obviously DEC wants the pond to have pre-standing water up to where the outfall will be. So during a storm event, it rises and recedes, and then you have a standing water pond. Who's to say, you know, you're gonna get cattails around the perimeter, which DEC also wants.
Yeah.
Because it helps filter the water out, the curries that happen from runoff and the roads and that. So they actually want to see the cattails around the perimeter. And the cattails, besides serving the function of, of being a cleaning agent for the storm water, it also keeps the geese out. The geese will not walk into a pond if there's cattails around the perimeter. When it's mowed all the way down and it's manicured, they're invited to come in. You're not gonna find geese landing into a stuff like that. Where this, if you leave it go natural, which DEC wants, you don't have that problem. As far as anything being stagnant, again, the storm events, it rises, falls, but you're gonna have, have a open water, you know, it's a shallow open water pond. That's the best design they want.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak regarding this? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jay Stane, I live at sixteen thirty Greenstone Drive. A number of things have been addressed, you know, I think people are making an earnest effort. I still don't see where the traffic on Salt Road has been addressed. Okay, it's getting worse. I mean, I looked at the heavy, for some reason now, ever since the bridge was repaired on Salt, we have heavy-duty trucks going up and down Salt Road that we never had before. Okay, and they're obviously not making, doing business on Salt Road. I can't even figure out where they're going, other than they're going down Lake Road. So I don't know why Salt Road has, you know, become the route that is preferred. Recently, the water, water department, Monroe County Water, has torn up the street. Their repairs are ridiculous. We have, you know, trucks, machinery in the road at all times. It is extremely hazardous for people who are bike riding or otherwise using Salt Road in order to move around. I'm a bi, I'm a cyclist, okay? I'm nervous, I grew up in New York City, I'm used to traffic, and Salt Road makes me nervous. People can't see anybody. They come up behind people, but they can't see them because people are parked, okay? In the certain, what you, I guess, what do you call it, the service lanes, the service areas, the breakdown lane. Twenty years I complained about this, someone from the police department came out, and I was vindicated. And just missed him at the last second because he pulled out around the car. And you, you know, I'm going to speed, and I'm not speeding. So I still don't hear this addressed. The, there was a, the letter that was read in about Woodard is very, very accurate. There is a dip in. If you are going from, if you're on Woodard and you're looking to go on Salt Road, it's impossible to see what is northbound. I mean, you have to really pull out into that lane, the northbound lane, to see what's going on there. I think some planning has to do to handle the traffic. Whether it's these people's responsibility or the town's responsibility, I don't know. But I don't think it can stay the way it is now, not with the additional traffic on that road. I think, you know, I think we're creating a dangerous situation. Okay, that's my business.
See, this project, I mean, I can understand what you're saying, the dip, you know, about Woodard Road and stuff, but this is quite a ways away from Woodard Road, really.
No, understood, it is, but you have the traffic, Salt Road is gonna have a lot more traffic.
And I understand that.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to. With the traffic that's on there now, we're gonna add, assuming that most of the homes there will have, you know, two cars, okay? And you're talking about increasing the traffic on a road that's not really designed for it. When I looked at the, the last, I don't have the paper with me, and I apologize for that, but when I looked at the last report that the town has on their website for when the traffic study was done on Salt Road, it's quite a while ago, quite a while ago. I mean, it's over ten years. So, you know, again, I'm concerned, you know, this is a done deal. I understand it, I'm not gonna go back to arguing this, I think you and I, and I thank you for your light, and we went back and fought on this. But the traffic, you know, is gonna need to be addressed either that road, God forbid, has to be widened. There may have to be a traffic signal put in. We already have people down on Schlegel who, you know, right through.
I agree with you a hundred percent with that one.
And that's gonna be, there's been a number of, I've been living where I live now since nineteen eighty-five. I've seen a number of accidents down there. And again, there's gonna be more traffic. You know, we need something done. I don't know what it is, I'm not a traffic engineer. But something needs to be looked at. This can't just go on and say, well, don't worry about it, you know, it'll somehow all fit on the roadway.
What is the speed limit at that, anybody know?
Speed limit on that is forty miles an hour.
Forty?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. And trust me, when they pass my house.
Yeah, I hear you.
And, you know, I understand that. But, you know, the trucks going up and down there, and these are heavy trucks, we're not talking about pickup trucks.
Yeah, see, the trouble with that though is, you got a good point, first of all, but on the other side of the coin, being a dedicated road, you can't tell if they can travel on it, and I know what you're saying, but what can you do?
Then let's, then let's enforce it, let's put, set up some enforcement.
Then it would go away.
Let's figure out what goes down on these roads, because again, or stop people, stop truck, you know, stop people and other services from parking in the breakdown. If we're gonna, if we don't have sidewalks, okay, and we don't, okay, and I'm not expecting the town to build sidewalks. But then that breakdown line becomes something that is used by pedestrians and cyclists. Okay, and you gotta do something there. I don't know what it is, I'm not, we're not gonna solve this tonight, but neither can we ignore it. It's not gonna go away. And as traffic increases, 'cause it will, we're building. Now, that's all I'm asking, you know, can we do something now?
That's a common rule.
It is a common rule. I live at Schlegel, it's salt, very close to there, and I agree completely with you.
Yeah.
And I personally have sent letters to the county legislator to take a look at it, and I think there's a board we've sent a letter as well. So I, I don't think it's gotten done yet, but you're not, we're all in agreement with you.
Yeah, what is it gonna take?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I see these young kids on there, you know?
Yeah, I have young kids. I worry about, like, I won't let them cross Salt Road from Schlegel to go to the school, which is ridiculous. Meanwhile, Schlegel and Basket is a four-way stop.
Right.
Yeah. There's no traffic in those places.
I mean, so, you know, if I can understand it's a county road, it may be beyond the town to address, but we can't wait until someone gets killed there to say, wow, we should have done something. You know, I, I don't think any of us want that to happen. I certainly don't want that to happen.
Well, it sounds, it sounds maybe a little cold to say right now, but I don't think there's anything we can do right now about that, because, you know, we're all in agreement with you a hundred percent. But you did have a good point. Maybe there's a situation where, and this has happened before, where there's been cases where people keep speeding and so on in areas, and they'll post the police cars over there once in a while and do some radar and stop a few, that slows it down. That's the only thing I can think of, sure.
They're fine.
We've been trying for a couple of years to get the county to put a stop sign on Schlegel Road and Salt Road. I live on Salt Road, just past that intersection. We've been trying to get, trying to do something about that, is that necessary?
Well, that, that, as Josh said, they did respond with their letter, and they're looking into putting the stop sign there now, so.
Hopefully.
Hopefully it happens.
Hopefully they're also looking to the condition of the road now, which makes it further hazardous.
Yeah, that's because the power authorities torn this all up.
But you've seen, but you've seen, you've seen what passes as a pavement.
And then they gotta fix that street, because it's a mess.
One thing to say, they gotta...
If you talk about it related to that, you know, and once that's done, we won't see that kind of traffic.
Okay, we'll move on.
All right.
Totally understand, thank you, I appreciate your comments. All right, anyone else?
Yes, sir. I've got one other question about that development. There'll be no streetlights there? No streetlights along that Salt Road?
Yeah, use the mic.
Can you add us?
Yeah, my name's Ray Ford, one sixteen ninety Marley Way, Ford, about Salt Road. There'll be no streetlights along there?
No. The originally proposed streetlights in the subdivision?
Yeah.
And, I guess, they're supposed to be proposed to us, so that's the record I have.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else wishing to add that?
What about at the, I'm sorry, what about the intersection? Would there be one where the intersection goes in to mark it or not, none at all?
No, that would, that would be the conflict.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing, yes, sir?
It's Dean Lucas, two ninety Salt Road. So, and we have talked, and I know we've got department there. My question for them, but I don't want to get y'all mad, so I'll put it to you. As far, as far as the berm being five feet high, I agree with Mark, it would be a nice visual color berm. I don't know about for Salt Road, like you've obviously have seen my property line and what I'm doing with that, and not, not by a lot of property. So, there's something back there. Number one. Two, the trees you were talking about, uh, the trees, what I keep asking for through my lawyer is arborvitae. I would like some arborvitae where you say my head road is with trees comes to my house. I would, I would love to have a cop here and we'll walk out, we'll see the line, you can see what I'm talking about. There is no street line. They're all just weeds that actually tip over. Every year, I probably have to push over ten, fifteen of these trees. They're just wild bushes that keep falling down. I would like to have arborvitae planted to keep that divided. I would love to have fence too, and, you know, you and I could fight about that, but I got a forty-foot playground for my grandkids and my, my parents' great-grandkids if they come over. I can see that being used as playground for the neighborhood. They're gonna look at that huge thing, and they're gonna be walking in my yard and dogs in my yard.
But that's, you're, you're saying that, but you don't know if that's a fact.
Oh, I know it's a fact.
Number two.
That would be, you mean, it would be absolutely absurd.
Number two, a backyard always backs up to another backyard. So you can't impose all kinds of restrictions.
You never get a stray animal from one yard to the next. You have to be correct. Wait a minute, no, you're ridiculous. You do. The animals stray, the animals come over. I got a three-year-old granddaughter, my granddaughter gets bit by your dog.
Um, I think there's a code that says they have to.
There is a code. There, yes, there is a code, and everybody follows it, right? Just like everybody follows the speed limit on Salt Road, right? Oh, wait a minute, no, you're wrong.
I'm wrong again.
Yes, you sure we are, yes. They don't, they don't follow the speed limit. Uh, what I was saying, like, I could probably tell you at least three times a week, there's a motorcycle goes down through there at about ninety miles an hour. They don't, they don't follow the rules. The rules are there, but they're not always followed. That's why I'm talking about the fence. I'm not saying that's on you. I'm saying that's maybe on me. I wouldn't mind handling that, but that's, I understand. As far as the arborvitae, instead of pine trees, pine trees, which I own millions of them on my property, they boil over. You put a pine tree out there, with the wind that we get, they're gonna be, they're gonna be laid down. Arborvitae, it's a deeper root, and it's gonna grow taller, it'll hide some of the houses, which I'm sure you're very proud of, you do, and, and it's good, you are. But I didn't buy to look at your beautiful houses. So I'm just, it, it basically, that's it. What was passed in two thousand eighteen shouldn't have passed. We can't go backward, I understand, but we're here. And I'm asking for things that, these arborvitae is not that much more expensive than pine trees. Right? I think.
From our standpoint. From our standpoint, uh, obviously, you've seen, we are certainly willing to cooperate and work with the neighbors. We've had a lot of concessions to try to make this a project that everybody'd be proud of, um, including the five-foot berm. Um, in, in our experience, the five-foot berm is pretty significant. It certainly has, impedes, if not prohibits, a lot of people from, from crossing. You know, um, then keep in mind, what we put on there, generally speaking, people that buy their homes, they approve that law. I mean, it, it's just natural that they're gonna go back and if they want to put arborvitae on there, they do. Frankly, the reason why we haven't used arborvitae in the past is the deer love them. Um, and, and the pine trees seem to work better, they grow taller, they grow thicker. Um, and then you have the five-foot berm. So by the time you add the pine trees and the people move in and add their own decorations and, and stuff to it, we've had a lot of success with it. So, well, I mean, and you wanna add to that, but generally, that's the experience we had.
We just, we just, pine trees tend to spread out more arborvitae than pine road top.
But the pine road.
I don't understand what animal that would stop from going through or kids go, walk in between.
No.
I mean, we stop there, it'd be a six-foot fence.
Yeah, I, I mean, and keep in mind, there's a five-foot berm, I mean, it doesn't, you know, I think that's getting downped a little bit, but it's, it's a sizeable berm.
Yes, we'll stop with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? We did receive two other comments. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dave Hill, two fifteen, Salt Road. And I would just, again, like to talk about the pond. I think we're gonna be directly across from that pond. And there are a number of ponds in the area that have absolutely no water in them. And as Mark indicated, they just turn into a cesspool, you know, mosquitoes, seaweed, you know, everything is there, and it is just very unpleasant. And we're gonna be looking directly at that. So I'm not sure, you know, what type of water level we're talking about initially. And then I know you're saying when the storm comes in, the water's gonna go up, but, you know, is there gonna be significant water movement so that it doesn't just stagnate? You know, that, that's our concern right now, now that we're gonna be looking at this water, you know, is it gonna be clear or is it going to be just, um?
Dreamed of something but a little.
Exactly.
Yeah, I got you.
Exactly. And in that track right next to us on Morley Way, they have, um, they have water there that, you know, there, there's barely any movement at all, and it is truly accessible right now. You know, we walked by there and we said, boy, I'm glad I don't live there. And now all of a sudden, you know, that's our, our front yard, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, you wanna, you, you, I think you could retain some water in there, right?
Yes, the, like I mentioned, uh, the E C requires us to have below the outfall structure three to four feet, and it's actually an undulation through the pond, so you have a deeper bay, and then you have what they call a micro pool. So it helps with, uh, the standing water. Obviously, depending on the storm events, how often they occur, whether the water rises and falls and, and moves, you're also gonna get groundwater movement. And we have, obviously, various new roads, so the storm systems all channel through the, the storm network and into the pond. And again, you do wanna see cattails around the perimeter, that's the requirement they hold us to as far as design. So what he's gonna see, obviously, his front yard, his house is set back fifty feet, sixty feet from the road, and then you've got the rightway, which is another sixty feet wide, and then we have the pond and the highway department who wants the pond close to the road so they can access the full length of it with their maintenance vehicles. So it's their intent to have it that close to the edge of the right, that's gonna be back from the road behind power poles. And, uh, you will see probably cattails around the perimeter, that, again, helps the period of pond. How much more we can do about it.
All right, is there any other wish to comment? What wish to comment?
So we received two additional comments online.
Oh, I had one more.
Uh, the first one is from Diford Lewis of two oh three Woodsview Drive. I think the entrance to this subdivision should be moved further south. The document states that the entrance will be three hundred feet north of Morley Way. There is a significant hill just north of the proposed entrance. Southbound drivers on Salt Road, often tra- traveling well in excess of forty miles an hour, will reach the crest of the hill and have little time to react to residents of the new subdivision, turning left and heading south at presumably low speeds having just left a stop sign. Moving the entrance further south would give drivers on Salt Road more time to react and drivers from the new subdivision a better view of oncoming traffic. I think this would be much safer.
This board and engineering agree with that, that the county wanted it moved, am I correct?
Correct.
And moving it to the north more. So that, what can we do about that?
Um, another comment came in from a Donald Paul. He didn't give his address, but he's addressing the board, and he's stating that he thought emergency services such as fire trucks are required, uh, they require more than one access road to a new subdivision such as this one. That is only true for developments that contain a hundred houses or more, and this one only contains seventy-nine. So there is a loop that exists, and it is sufficient to get one point of entry.
All right. Okay, anyone wishing to comment? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Comments?
I agree, I believe that, uh, the county's making a mistake with that intersection. I have one.
Yep.
I don't know why they're making that decision or requirement. Just seems ridiculous. That's my, that's my thought.
Go ahead.
Down suddenly, a letter from the county expressing they're looking at the condition of the road there.
Well, the condition, that, yeah, that's a different issue. Yeah, I, I mean, I, you have to guess that with all the work they're doing, underhailing water, basically destroyed the area there. They'll probably have to re-source this damn road.
Right. Some of the watering, I've driven down there, I was down there today.
Yeah.
Obviously, they kept a lot of the watering in the grass area within the rightway, and then some areas, they really looped it out. I don't know exactly why, did you study the plans? But they looped it, they saw cut and went out into the pavement. So obviously, you know, it's a two-lane road, and then there's a four-foot shoulder. So right now, their patchwork is basically to allow the, the trench to settle, and then I would suspect they're probably gonna mill it, probably rebuild the road, because that's what they do with the county road, they just don't, they're not gonna leave it with the patchwork that they did, because that's only temporary, it isn't time to settle off.
You know, you know what might be a good idea, recommend, recommendation too, to the county, when they do get to that point, that the road isn't just a, I mean, 'cause , you know, everyone spoke.
Yeah, it's every, it's.
That's a new variable road. And a two-lane road is okay. If you're riding a bike down it, you're on the edge of it, you're taking a risk, I've done it many times. And it should be completed more with a soft asphalt, whatever, you know, like Bay Road is, or I'm sorry, like the Wood Road is, yeah, where it's sand. Clung road, yeah, with a wide lane on there, but it'd have to be that wide. With a four-foot strip of paved area.
Adds a shoulder, they call it.
Adds a shoulder, because it does get a lot of bike traffic and.
Right. I would suspect they're gonna do it same way here, State D O T does it when they're all done with the work. Probably gonna mill that bad spot, and then they'll probably, now they came up with a new, uh, coat pavement, that says pretty nice, they used it on the express, it's on one oh four. And it's, it's a relatively thin pavement, but they, they pave the whole thing, works really well, and it holds up. And then they'll go through a restructure.
So how do we get that to happen?
Once they get into the construction, I'm sure they want it done before, where they, they're not gonna leave it like that.
Don't wanna build the floor.
Yeah, that's why they're doing the watering now. So those are double the watering, and they were actually doing directional drilling, so that's probably for gas main repair. And, uh, once they're done with the construction work.
Don't wanna be.
They'll fix the road up and repave it.
So who can, that's not your responsibility, but who can?
Uh, Red Kennedy, where you're at.
Look at your face.
Yeah, Pat goes to the meetings routinely, so.
Who was, I'm sorry?
Pat, yeah, so they'll, they'll watch her, they'll repair and destroy road tracks.
So what'd be a good idea, they have Pat bring that up?
Yeah.
To them, that when they do, you consider, consider more pretty shoulders on the side of that, because that does get a lot of traffic, I mentioned that.
Yeah. Plus, there's construction up on Lake Road, there's new development going in there, so the dump trucks are going by.
Yes, probably.
Probably because of that.
Yeah.
But that's why the water main is breaking. You can see the cracks in the street.
I guess we've, uh, pretty much covered everything. All right. Engineering-wise, Jack, or Mary, you know, you've been at the P R S, anything lacking that you feel needs to be addressed on this?
I don't think so. I think we'll just want to see, like, the final plans and segments.
Yeah, with that sewer, um, extension, yeah. All right, uh, that said, public hearing has been closed, we need to move forward. Go ahead, do a secret.
I have a beautiful motion for a public, private, state agency. Whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board, considered to be pressed by Appalachian Forest Street Equity Corporation of Minnesota. Seventy-nine block single-family residential subdivision of sixty-nine point five acres, located in an R three single-family residential district on section two twenty-eight four to two twenty-eight eight, in the road of Town of Webster. Now therefore, we have resolved that the planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to part six seventeen point six, sub B, sub four of SEER, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. Planning Board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. Now therefore, we have resolved that the planning board has determined that the action is a type-one action based on the following criteria. One, the New York State Department of Health Title X, Part ninety-seven, Regulations Implementing State Environmental Quality Review, Section ninety-seven point fourteen, lists of Department actions, ninety-seven point fourteen, sub D, sub two, Sub Roman numeral two, lists Realty Subdivision as type-one action. Project is a Realty Subdivision as defined by Public Health Law. Number two, Section six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub eight, of SEER Regulation states that any unlisted action that includes a non-agricultural abuse, occurring bullying, or parting within an agricultural district, certified pursuant to Agriculture and Market Law, Article twenty-four double A, Section three oh three and three oh four, and exceeds twenty-five percent of any threshold established in this section. A, according to Monroe County Development Review Committee, Review Comments dated seven twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. This project occurs on or within five hundred feet of land in agricultural production in Monroe County's Eastern Agricultural District. B, part six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub six, Roman numeral one, identifies actions that physically disturb ten acres of land are type-one actions. Number three, Section six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub five, Roman numeral three, of SEER Regulation, states that, quote, "In a city, town, or village having a population of one hundred and fifty thousand persons, two hundred units, to be connected at the commencement of habitation to existing community or public water and sewage systems, including sewage treatment works." A, according to two thousand fifteen American Community Survey Five Year Estimates by U.S. Census Bureau, the population of the Town of Webster is forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three. Therefore, based on the criteria number two above, the threshold established by criteria number three is reduced to fifty units. Because of the proposed action, it includes the construction of seventy-nine residential units, it exceeds the threshold established by criteria number three, making it a type-one action.
I'll second.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mina?
Hi.
Mr. Minsel?
Hi.
Mr. Kinsel?
Hi.
Mr. Monka?
Hi.
Mr. Fishon?
Hi.
All right, um, let's see, it's, I'll make a motion for the preliminary approval for Aberdeen State Subdivision. This is, this is actually a project number that was dated, uh, June ten, six-ten-twenty-one, and the project number is twenty-one dash one-two-zero-three-four. And let's see, make that subject to, uh, subject to P R C comments, uh, subject, subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, uh, subject to, uh, let's see, we don't have that, nothing to do with that, let's see, it's actually, uh, it's me, the one we're answering, okay? Address any land conveyed to the Town of Webster, I don't believe there's any, is there? A bender? Okay, so we'll leave that in there. Address any land that be conveyed to the town, which we've got on the drawing. Address any recent subdivision of rules, adjacent lands, or none, we'll leave that. All rules shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster, and all roadway construction to be in accordance with the specifications and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Preserve all mature trees on the site where possible, and mark said trees, uh, by the developer's engineer prior to commencing site work. All comply with all requirements of any state, county, or county agency. Address drainage, lighting, signage, landscaping, we have to do some, some, some. The apple, there, let's see, the landscape, hardscape, site accessories associated finished grade design uh, must be prepared by a mere state licensed architect, landscape architect. And, uh, the approvals, again, are subject to the project. And, uh, let's see. Regarding to the sewer, I'll put that for final, so I'll leave that as a preliminary approval. Please, sir.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kersel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, so for final approval, we make this, again, subject to all, uh, Project Review Committee comments. Uh, subject to parks and recreation fees that are determined by the Town Board. Uh, subject to all preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all governmental, applicable governmental fees, determined by the, the engineer. Subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur on this project, one year is needed by the planning board to expire at August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The conditions, preliminary and final approval, should be depicted on the cover page of the final design draft due to that. Uh, the engineer for the, this is a key thing, now, this is the thing that we were talking earlier, Mary. The engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all the proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution, the final approval before significant occupancy decision. We put this in all the time, but it's been going by waste, I, you know, so we kind of forced it a little bit. So, the next one would be a letter of credit to the town for the project, and for that, shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection, the certification inspection, actually, of the site. So, that is something that you go back at the final, and just kind of, you know what I'm saying, just for the record. That you go back and inspect it when it's done, this way here, it's all down, and because there's been a lot of cases where it's been slipped by, or just.
We did it for Doyle.
Yes, it gets repeated, obviously, you know, so, okay, so anyways, engineer, you're aware. Uh, what else? Uh, stormwater facilities are to be constructed, all site work, obviously, that comes in first. Uh, subject to resolution and final approved minutes. And again, the approvals are subject to the drawn, I mean, I used to get the, and, oh, I want to add in there, too. The, uh, I just, I don't know, uh, the final approval should be subject to the applicant providing a sewer connection to the North Bay property, and eight-inch, I think it was?
Eight.
Eight-inch sewer drain to the Bay property, and, uh, expedited, because we're giving the final.
Yeah, we'll redo it, I'll, I'll get ahold of this, draw it, and we'll redo it then.
And then you can get that done right away and get that into the, before you start, okay? That work for you, all right, Josh, this? All right, okay. All right, that's the motion for final approval.
Almost got that.
Mr. Krishani?
Aye.
Mr. Kersel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for the project.